We have a quorum. So let's open that 632. Let's see. Got Kevin back in. Okay, first order is minutes of December 14th. Are there any questions, comments, corrections?
Make a motion to adjourn. December 14th, minutes.
Something?
Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. I guess we're pretty much gonna do a roll call at this point.
Yeah, because you have people who work with this family.
All in favor, Kevin?
Harvey, aye.
Marilyn?
Marilyn, aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Tim has still not joined us. Okay, next item is a public hearing notice from Hubbard Street. Anybody any comments or anything about that?
Just would have liked to known what it was about. So I think I'm gonna look it up between now and next meeting and find out what our request is. Be interesting.
Yeah, I suppose. Rate of development.
Because normally it's the other way around. They're copying us.
Yeah. Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Wouldn't bother me at all. I'm about to miss the latest episode of Life Below Zero. Whether it's going out there or on TV.
I was gonna say, you're living it right now.
Anyway, okay, next item. A and R lot, Ridge Road, Wachusett Road. And Julian, I gather that you're here for that.
Yes.
You have it safe for yourself.
We've got a piece of property owned by Williams O'Daly, who couldn't make it here tonight. Just got weather and all that. It's a piece of property off of Ridge Road. And this is Ridge Road here. And Wachusett Road is here. And we created typical R60 zoning lots. 200 feet of frontage. Minimum acre and a half each block. And every one of these lots meets zoning as set forth in zoning bylaws.
With the exception of the estate lot?
No, this is a... Yes. We'll have to come back for this one lot here for the special permit for an estate lot. Correct. That's lot number... 3E. And then we also, you guys who seem to like to see a... Will the houses be, will the driveways be in the future? So we came up with a schematic with showing house, driveway, house, driveway, house, driveway. Right down the whole line for each and every lot.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
Mine is, it's under 61A. And I would not like to see this thing brought forth as a A and R at this time until if you're gonna pull it. Because once you do all the work and then you don't pull the A and R, the town has right of first refusal. And so I'm saying, why go to this energy unless you're gonna pull it? And if you do pull it, I was hoping to have confirmation tonight here that maybe you had done it. But there is no confirmation of that.
The first step is, it is on the chapter land. And the process to get it out of chapter land is the town has first refusal. And the monetary amount is based on an appraisal of the property. So Mrs. O'daly wanted to go with what's by right. What can he get on the property? This is what he can get. So now if he goes to get it out of chapter land, there's your basis. So that's why we're proposing it this way.
But had you proposed it the other way, the town would not have to pay as much.
Mrs. O'daly is wanting to get what he can get out of his property. I mean, that's what it is.
It is. But there again, I'm going to who originally owned the piece of property and her wishes was never to have it built.
I can't, I don't know.
I know you don't, because it's something that a long time ago.
Norm, Mr. Tim?
Yes.
Hey, I've got a question for you. I thought, and again, I could be wrong, on lot... I apologize. Is it 45 that's right there on Ridge Road and Wachusett Road? Is that Ridge? I can't tell what road that is.
Lot 4S.
Go down, 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 down. Yep, lot, I'm sorry, 4S?
4S, yep, yep.
Yeah, that frontage is on two different roads. I didn't think we allowed that because we had a town meeting and we shot that down, didn't we?
Did not, it did not... No.
It didn't pass, so I don't see how you can do that with that piece of property. Because you're using frontage on two different roads.
No.
No, it's allowed.
It's allowed.
It was originally Wachusett Street, Tim.
Well, regardless, if the frontage is contiguous...
It's contiguous frontage. From here to here, we're allowed to have 200 feet of frontage. There's no bylaw or zoning law that says it has to be on one road or the other.
Oh, I thought that's what we shot down at the town meeting, that it had to be all on one road. So I apologize. I just, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I have no problem. But I thought, because I remember Mr. Patterson was at questioning that on Weaver Road and Campbell Street. Because that corner lot, part of it was on Weaver Road, which is a town road.
Yep, you're right.
Campbell Street. And I didn't think that was gonna be allowed. But if I'm wrong, I'm good. Okay, thanks.
Okay. And it does appear that Wachusett Road is a town road.
It is a town road, absolutely. Actually, the town's actually working on it.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, and this is a request from Anita Carlson, that we, and I'm gonna frame it a little bit differently, that we would get a document from the owners agreeing to a name change on the road.
I believe he would be open to that. Because that's very confusing.
We don't want to Wachusett Street and Wachusett Road.
No.
And that makes very good sense to us.
Absolutely. I agree with that 100%.
Norm, the other question I had when I looked at this, and Julian, you can probably answer that. I saw two Princeton town lines on this. One that looked like it was the old rock fence. And then the other that's actually a town line that looks like a surveyor did from a plan book. So is that something, we gotta get fixed?
No. Let me tell you how this has gone about.
Okay, cool, thanks, sir.
The stone wall, which is the higher line, has been considered the town line since the king owned the land. All the lots going down both directions, all plans on file, have called that stone wall. It goes over behind Harry Johnson's all the way to Ridge Road. And it goes this way back to Dick's area. And then in 2020, the city of Worcester purchased this piece of property. And they had a survey company out there. And they located the actual town corner monuments, which is, I don't know, five, six, seven miles that way. And towards Holden this way with GPS, GIS GPS. And they put coordinates on it. And technically, that's the town line.
And Julian, you're saying where the dotted lines are...
This dotted line is the town line according to if they ever mapped out the town of Rutland and the town of Princeton.
So my next question is, we got A and R property in two towns. What do we do on that?
Well, I'll explain that also. We are not changing any of the configuration in the town of Princeton. Therefore, we're not creating any new lines in Princeton. So we don't need to go to Princeton. That's why I actually, on this lot here, held it from that line so that we didn't need to deal with two towns. What we'll end up doing, we also put a note on the plan, if you slide down. We gave some areas of how much land is in Princeton and how much is in Rutland. So when this gets recorded after Registry of Deeds, they will notify the town of Rutland, once the plan gets recorded, and the town of Princeton. And if the town of Princeton so chooses to send a tax bill to this lot, they have every right to do so. But we didn't change any lot lines, so we don't need to have planning board approval or anything like that. But we will send a copy of the plan to the town.
But should, Norm, haven't we got A and R plans in other towns? When they were bordering or possibly going into Rutland, have we gotten courtesy?
If I did this, if you slide this back so I can see this corner. You'd be completely correct, Tim, if I brought this line for this first lot to that wall right across where my finger's going. I created a new line in the town of Princeton. Therefore, I have to go to the town of Princeton for endorsement.
So you're saying, Julian, lot 2E, which is the estate lot, actually that little corner goes back into...
Yes, correct.
Okay. So you literally didn't change...
Nothing in Princeton.
...any lots that touched Princeton. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we did that to avoid more confusion.
What about over on the other side?
Same thing. If you go over to that one, we did not create anything new in the town. That's was there, and it's still there. We didn't create any new lot lines.
Okay, all right. Good enough. I just thought I would ask.
No, that's good. That was a big challenge on this end on. In 2020, they decided to depict the town line as a different.
I didn't want to step on it.
That's all I know. So it is what it is.
I just have one question. On that lot, we just talking about up in that far corner, you got the driveways in Princeton, correct?
Yep.
Does that propose any problems?
You just have to go to Princeton for a driveway permit.
And mailbox?
That'll be, well, it'll probably be a Rutland address because the house is gonna be in Rutland.
We make sure that's good with the fire department, they won't have any confusion on their GPSs or whatever.
We'll have to deal with that when we get to that point. By how they address it.
Julian, that's the only way to bring it in, because don't I see wetlands everywhere else in frontage?
There is. And there's actually a driveway there already.
Okay.
We'll work that out.
So, Norm, this is a question for me. So I get what Julian's doing and the Zottlys are doing. I'm okay with that. And they can spend the money to do this design and get the A and R approved. But, and again, maybe I'm stepping on select board toes and I'm overstepping my bounds in the planning board. But do they have to put this land for 61A in front of the select board? And then they have to send out to the CONCON, the ag commission, and the planning board first right of refusals?
Yes.
Is that still, you done?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I was asking.
Unless they pay the bad taxes.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure that that process is still in place.
Yes, it is.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'm just a little bit curious because last week with Peter Crane, we looked up the assessor's data page on this property. And it did list it under 61A, but there was something like discontinued in, I don't know, 2018 or something of that idea. Yet it appeared they were still getting the tax benefit.
The Board of Assessors says it's good until October of this year, I believe. You have to file 61A stuff every year for the Board of Assessors.
But the thing is, the date that they put on that, that it wasn't, was several years back.
Well, I went to the Board of Assessors and that's what she told me, so...
And, Norm, I've got one lot, hopefully this is my last question. Unfortunately, Marilyn's not there to kick me. I'm not close to her. I noticed on the left side of the drawing of the A and R plan for what we're looking at now, it looks like the house driveways go into the right of way. And I guess maybe this is a question for Director Buckley. Are those solid lines that are considered property lines? Is that where the road's gonna be? Or is the little dotted line, it looks like a cart trail, is where the road's gonna be?
This, where I have my finger right now? Yeah, the road is in between these two lines. It's a gravel road, so it's no real decline.
Could somebody please just zoom in for me? I can't see it from here, I'm sorry.
There's a dotted...
Yeah, Joe, that's what I was saying. It looks like the, I see these dark property lines.
That's the right of way.
It looks like the driveways are going to this little, I don't know, 10 foot, 15 foot...
This is just for illustration that the driveway is coming off of this road here that we're not, I hate to say the word, creating any illusory lots.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to get at, is the intent, again, I've heard that this road was gonna get fixed. Again, I don't know the whole details of it. But was the intent to widen it to a town-sized road?
Not only is it gonna be widened that wide. It's gonna be what Director Buckley decides that is a safe, passable road to...
Okay.
So that's just, whether it's here or here, as long as it's connecting the road here. It's not coming somewhere else. That's all, just to give a basic...
I'm just, I'm trying to find out. It's where the frontage is.
Right. Yeah, this is the existing gravel that was in place now, and we did the survey. But that's being changed as we're, well, last fall.
Because the heavy lines are the right of way.
The heavy line is the right of way.
And just like in the subdivision...
Like any other road.
In a subdivision, the driveway
Goes into it.
Goes through
Yes.
the edge of the right of way to get to the pavement.
So the actual property lines for this A and R will be out up to the dotted line, correct?
Right, the solid line.
The solid line.
Solid line and solid end. Go, slide this up and you can see on Ridge Road.
Okay.
See Ridge Road, this is the actual asphalt line right there. And see how it's coming into it? That's actually the paved line on Ridge Road.
I guess I'm, if somebody can help me, I'm confused on the property lines. Because my property lines go out upon the dusted, yet I give the town a 10-foot right of way into my property. This looks like the property line ends it.
No, it doesn't, Tim. Your line ends, say if this is 56, your line ends just like this shows. Your driveway goes across a little grass strip or woods or brush. And then there's pavement. But on your road, it's actually, 56 is wider. It's probably 50 or 60 feet wide.
Okay. I apologize, I didn't know that.
It's the right of way line that we deal with.
Okay, so, okay, I apologize. In my previous state, you owned the right of way, but the town had authorization to do anything in it.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's my knowledge from a different state. We, in my previous house ownership in a different state, we owned that right of way area up to the road, but the town had full rights to do anything with it. So I had to mow it, take care of it, do all that stuff. I couldn't leave it up to the town to do any maintenance on it. It was up to, because it was listed on my deed. And then the town was given a right of way for the road. So, okay, good enough. I just learned something new. I appreciate it.
Could I speak to the condition of the roadway, please?
Yes.
Who's chairing the meeting?
I am, Norm.
Norm, thank you. Through the chair. It was brought to the town's attention that this was a public road. It had just not been used in many years. Once we were able to legally ascertain it was a public road, we had it surveyed just to verify what we own and what we don't own out there. The dark lines that were just discussed actually are the limit of the public right of way. When this was brought before the select board, they asked DPW to bring it up to gravel road standards of the time of when the road would have been used. So we're looking at 6, 8, 10 inches of gravel in places. I don't think the road's gonna be of any type of standard that you could speak to with the, except that it should be passable by at least one car. And the roadway surface should remain, you know, the wearing surface should remain stable and the road should drain and not flood. That's all our intent is at this time, and that's all the board has asked us to do. I hope that clears it up.
Yep. Director Buckley is through the chair. Is that area up there water and sewn or is that gonna be well-inseptic?
There are no town services that they could take advantage of in that vicinity.
Thank you.
I have one quick question for the board, though, if that's all right.
Yes.
Is Ridge scenic?
No.
Thank you.
It was going to be proposed to be designated as such, but it never came to the town meeting.
It cut my back, I'm sorry.
It may be to the next one, but...
Yeah, it might be brought to the next town meeting, we don't know. But right now it's not.
What I can tell you from our work out there is portions of this road are quite damp. Some of these parcels are wet.
Joe, I'm just kinda curious, it doesn't really make much difference. But I'm just noticing, you said you had the roadway surveyed. And at least looking on this plan, the right of way is definitely variable. Is there any explanation for that, or is it just that's the way it?
Yes, because there are stone walls along this whole roadway. And the property, there was a plan in the early 1900s that showed Wachusett Road going through with stone walls. And Zottley does not own that portion of, between the face of a wall and face of a wall.
So the right of way is actually determined by the stone wall.
That's why it's a variable.
Okay.
That's why that happened.
That's a good answer.
I actually tried to get it consistent with, and the surveyor we hired, Jarvis Land Survey, and our counsel advised that we have to go center of stone wall to center of stone wall to establish the right of way.
Okay, that's fine, that's good. Like I said, I was just curious.
Believe me, I wanted it all one with.
Yeah, I can see that.
But then what happens is you end up having property that goes to the town or goes back to the property owner, and it's not clean. You're better off to stick with the variable width.
Well, you have variable width snowplows anyway, don't you?
So, Norm, and again, maybe Dick, one of you two, because I haven't been over there. I don't know this area, other than maybe if I was over there during the ice storm helping clear. I don't remember. Is this somewhat similar to Brittenell?
No.
I'd say not.
Okay.
Maybe closer to Sassawanna?
Okay, all right, that's good. Thanks, Norm, that gives me an idea of what I'm dealing with.
We put a lot of work into Sassawanna. That's in much better condition than this road is at this time.
Do you feel you would be bringing it up to approximately the conditions of like Brittenell or Sassawanna?
I, probably closer to Sassawanna. And that's what the board had asked us to do.
Okay.
It'll be a gravel road, 12, 15 feet wide. The wearing surface will be compressed gravel. We've already made some drainage improvements. The funding is in place. We just ran out of time this construction season. DPW has seen some sizable cutbacks in staff.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, I think the only other comment, and I'm not gonna make a big deal out of it, is the payment for the A and R. You're creating 22 lots. But they're on both sides of the road. I'm assuming one side of the road is a lot and the other side is a lot to start with.
Okay, so you'd be 50 bucks more?
So, yeah. But I don't know, I'll leave it to the rest of the board whether we really feel we have to get that extra $50.
What it is is, if that's what it calls for, that's what it should be.
Whatever you want. So if you need to bring a check, you'll bring it up.
Marilyn?
I agree.
Kevin's?
Yeah, I agree with you, Marilyn.
Another $50.
Tim?
Oh, I agree, just to make it fair, add the $50 in.
Okay. Agreed?
Yeah, that's fine.
If you take cash, I can leave you 50 bucks now to stop and keep it rolling.
Okay, anything further?
The only thing, Norm, I got a question, is the drawing that we have in front of us right now on the screen says no name. So when this A and R gets recorded and it says Wachusett Road, and then, I'm guessing this is a plan that's recorded, is that correct?
Where are you saying no name?
Right there.
Right there.
Oh.
That, that...
That's not right.
That's from the assessor's office.
Yeah, that's, no, that's not the plan we're recording.
You know, I don't think it would be official for a name.
No, the official name is Wachusett Road.
It is Wachusett Road, correct.
But I know Mrs. O'daly talked about if the town wants to change that name to make it, whatever process we need to do, he will do.
I would just like to have something in writing from them agreeing to it.
Right, so I'll talk to him and I'll come up with what he'd like to do. And then whatever process we need to do, we can do that.
I don't think you would have to do anything. I think that's strictly with the select board. In fact, yes, we looked it up just today. It's just the process through the select board to town meeting.
Good.
All right, that's it, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else, anything on this one?
Not on this part of it. And I'm... If we're done here, this part?
Whoops, I have a hand raised out there.
Peter Crane, Nate Swate. Julian, I know Norm said that current people don't need to take action, and that's technically true. But it might be best, rather than having the town heads decide what the name of the road should be, we've heard from Anita, the town clerk, that she wants that road name changed because it's a public safety issue. So if they were to come up with recommendations for names, it might make it a little easier to get through the process rather than having somebody in the town figure out what a better name would be.
Suggest it, and I'll ask Mrs. O'daly.
No, Norm is right. It comes up to the select board to put an article in the warrant, but that's the process.
Call it Zottley Road.
Yeah, for example.
I don't think any of this falls to the Zottlys at all to name it. This is the board only.
It's the town.
This is a town road.
Yeah, it would only be a suggestion.
Right, yes, that was my... Right, yes, that was, that was my point, that it makes it, it, it'll make it smoother if we can, if suggestions are put forth to select board.
Then you guys come on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, Norm, to, to Joe's point, doesn't Anita have to bring that to the select board? And, and maybe Peter, you can answer that.
Uh, it does not say who needs to bring it to the select board, all it says is that it could be changed by town meeting vote. That's the only way to change it, so the select board needs to put an article in the warrant to change the name of the road.
Okay.
Okay, anything more?
I have to say that, uh, I don't know where it stands ethic-wise, but just to let you know that my wife is, uh, cousin to Billy Zottley. So I don't know if it's far enough away and everything else, but...
Yeah, I think so.
Just let it out there.
Kissin' cousins?
Uh, that I've never heard.
Well, I, I, I think, Norm, as long as Dick's not, how do I put this? Not benefiting financially, or have any, um, building or house issues on this, I don't see an ethics problem with it.
No, I, I, you know, I don't really either.
You know what thing I have, and I, I don't know if I wanna do it, because, because of my relationship with Kyle's mother and Billy's wife, late wife. So, that's all.
Well, then Dick, vote your heart, that's what I tell you to do.
I don't want it to stop right at the moment. Besides that, Marilyn said if I get out of hand, she's gonna hit me with a cane. Because I really was gonna flare up, Julian, I, I really would, because of...
I'm sorry, I understand.
Uh, because of, I know that things have changed as, as perks, because right, a thousand feet, less than a thousand feet, for God's love, you know, when he tried to perk and, and...
I understand.
Thank God I stayed there at that percol, because, uh, failed. So, anyways.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion. Somebody?
Yes, Norm, I have a motion to endorse, um, the A and R for, uh, Wachusett Road, or A and Rs for Wachusett Road, and, and, uh, it, let me rephrase that, Julian, there's no, the A and Rs aren't on Ridge Road, they're just on Wachusett.
They're on Ridge Road and on Wachusett Road.
That's what I thought I better, so I'll make a motion to endorse A and Rs, um, or this A and R on, uh, Wachusett Road and Ridge Road.
Oh, second.
Second, is there any further discussion? I think we've got it pretty well. Okay, uh, hearing on roll call vote, Tim?
Aye.
Uh, Kevin?
Aye.
Uh, Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Staying.
Staying, Norm, aye. Uh, the motion passes. Four guesses and one extension.
And now, what is the next, uh, I got the fifty bucks.
Drop it off tomorrow with the top, I'd rather not.
How, how do I, uh?
I don't think, I think the money should be...
All right, I'll have a write a check, I didn't want it to hold, be held up because... So when, when could I, the first question I'm gonna get asked is, do you have my lot? I said, well, no, maybe, so is it like a week from now, or?
It's gonna be signed as soon as the board can get up to the office, we're gonna get two signatures here tonight.
Okay.
Then we need the other two members to come to the office, so as possible to endorse it, so, yeah.
Do you, you do have a mylar?
I have the mylar right here.
Mylar, yeah.
But you didn't, you don't have enough signatures.
Okay, yeah.
But you get two of them, so that's...
Look, I have one.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll drop the check off tomorrow, and we'll both be here, thank you very much.
Just to let you know, it used to be a good road for, um, sugaring, that was part of the twenty-two hundred caps.
Really?
Way back in, uh, late seventies, late fifties and early sixties, I mean, it's sort of...
We're gonna have to take a look, I, I, you know, I've heard of these roads many a times, but I've never really noticed...
Right there, right in front of the house.
Okay, and, anyway, uh, I, I am a little curious, Julian, are, are they planning on moving ahead with this quickly, to...
I think he wants to do something. That's why he did it, for his grand, his granddaughter and his daughter mainly, what he's trying to set up, so...
But they're not contractors?
No.
Interesting. Okay.
No.
Okay. Uh, next item is, uh, continued public hearing on the special permit for a car wash, uh, which we have information that they are not ready to move any further with this, so I guess it's just gonna be a continuation?
Yes, a continuation until the twenty-fifth of January, which is the, 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 in the next meeting.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to continue this hearing to the twenty-fifth? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, in favor, Kevin?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Anybody got an extra pen?
This is part of the box, I'll give it to you.
All right.
Great, thanks, can I get that copy, get me paid out for this last one?
Now, it's plenty of the last. Okay, next we have all of the, uh...
Thank you.
Subdivision, uh, administration, starting with Maple Hill.
One, one second, please, when was this thing extended to?
Uh, the twenty-fifth of January.
Twenty-fifth? Thank you.
Okay, uh, Maple Hill, let's see, the latest we have is the December twenty-seventh.
Nope, there's one from January sixth, Norm, or January seventh.
Is there?
That came in. Uh, I don't think it's in the packet, I think it was sent out by David, uh, this week.
Right, the board has all the information, uh, if you hear it tonight, you have a paper copy back up, otherwise you just have the electronic copy.
Yeah, okay.
But for Maple Hill, there's December twenty-seventh from the consulting engineer. Uh, there's a response from the developer, January sixth. The further correspondence from the consulting engineer, January seventh. And then there's a staff letter for January fifth that applies all of these.
Oh, I didn't see the...
And we also have a display on the screen, if you wanna use as reference.
Okay. Uh, it appears to me that basically not much has really happened on Maple Hill. Uh, there is some work that still needs to be done, but it really cannot be done in this season, so...
What, Norm, the one thing that bothered me is, again, when Carl puts stuff in bold, it, it bothers me. And it's, uh, it says on the January seventh letter from Carl, it is recommended that the developer contact Joe Buckley to discuss a puddling remedy. And I guess I was gonna ask, through the chair, Director Buckley, has that happened?
Yes, I did talk to the superintendent, I did a field visit, uh, as did some of my staff, we did not find excessive puddling. More importantly, um, I, I don't think that Carl's observations were unfounded by any means. It's just remedies would be, um, not, not so much cost prohibitive. Shy of tearing the whole road up, doing it all over again, that, that's all you really could do, and it's so flat there, I don't know if you'd accomplish anything.
Okay, I just, Joe, all I wanted to make sure was that the conversation happened, and if you're satisfied, um, being a DPW director, I'm good. I just, I didn't see any feedback that, uh, that had, that had happened, so I just wanted to top the eyes and cross the t's, so I'm good, thanks.
No, I appreciate that, and, um, he, uh, like I said, their superintendent, Mr. Larson, did contact me, um, and we did actually go look at it in the rain. And I went by myself and looked at it, so I, I, I think it'll be all right.
All right, good.
Yeah, I, I had looked at it, and, and the puddling, at least what I saw, i- it seemed to me was definitely, in, in a few places, it was less than a half inch. So...
Okay, cool.
That's pretty hard to correct.
And, and Norm, I'm okay with, with their response, because of water shut offs, sewer shut offs, electrical boxes, blah, 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 all the above, that the trees aren't relatively balanced, I'm okay with that, because last thing you wanna do is put roots next to an electrical box. That's not gonna work out well down the road. So, Tim, what are you trying to say? I, I'm, as working for Eversource, I, I, I fully understand, Joe, your tree issues now. With, with sewer lines, electrical lines, gas piping lines, yeah, I feel your pain way too much now.
I don't know, I keep thinking that I remember in a minute that we already approved that change.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, um, the board officially took action to recognize the change in the spacing for the trees as a field change, that's on the record. As, as a matter of fact, in the January sixth report from the consulting engineer, they acknowledged that outcome of the board and the vote, so therefore that's no longer an issue. That's reflected as, in a future, a report, which is part of this package here.
All right, great, thanks. That's all I had for Maple Hill.
Anybody else, anything on Maple Hill? Okay, then onward to Bryce Lemon.
Oh, boy. Mind putting that up on the screen, somebody? I guess I'll ask the first question.
Yeah.
Is there any water, sewer, or electrical lines that are not at Massachusetts code depth in that Phase Three?
Well, let's put it this way, if that were the case, I would fully expect that Kyle Holgren would have noted it.
I thought there wa, maybe I missed something, I thought there was some discussion about water and sewer lines being above the eighteen inches on that road, maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Chair, that's, that's coming up for the next item.
That, that's, that's, that's Brittenell, I believe.
I apologize, was that Brittenell and not Bryce, I made a mistake?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'll, uh, I'll put away the iced tea. Okay.
Did it taste good?
No, it's uncaffeinated, it's basically brown water.
Just a, uh, on, on, on that Phase Three, about the roadway being very silty. Uh, I did talk with Tom Larson, uh, about that, and he says that, you know, they're doing their best, they are, they are using snowplows to keep the heavy stuff, you know, off of the roadway. But with the season, with no frost in the ground and the wet fall, it, it, it's almost impossible to keep it totally clean.
I, I guess, Norm, I gotta ask one question, and you guys can, maybe I'm off in left field playing, right? I didn't think we were allowing occupancy permits in Phase Three until Phase Two was accepted by the town. We were doing it in a phased approval, so, am I wrong in that?
I believe you're wrong.
Okay. All right.
You sure about that? Why do I have the same feeling as he does?
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah.
Well, all, all I will say is, uh, we can have Dave go back and take a look at the conditions of the approval.
Yes, but however, this issue seems to keep coming around and around and around, it's my recollection that you were in the office, and we looked through the decision itself, we didn't find any such reference previously. That's my recollection of it, yeah, the issue's gonna come around and around and around, so I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I thought, Dave, that they were allowed to build houses in the next phase. Um, they could build them all they want and sell them, they just couldn't get occupancy permits until the, until the previous phase was approved. And I'm not saying stop building, don't get me wrong, I, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying they couldn't occupy them until the next phase was approved, but I, I pretty much can tell you that didn't happen in Phase Two, because we hadn't accepted it, and we were walking around to people living in houses.
The, the, the only reference to holding back on occupancy permits that I recall is on Bear Hill Two.
Okay, good enough.
And that has to do with the connection out to Brittenell Drive.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, I'll move on.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I, I think I, on this one, uh, previously I recall that I circulated the decision to the board so that the board could see it when this question came up previously. I'm going to forward the decision again, so folks, when I have a look at it, it's there, which isn't need for further discussion on a particular term or condition, then this is a running item on the agenda, and it's a open subdivision, then it needs to be revisited, then it can be.
Yeah, Dave, the, the, Dave and Norm, the, the reason why I, I'm struggling with this is because some of these subdivisions are taking four and five years to build, and my memory's not that good, so... So that's the only reason, I apologize if I'm interfering with the board's time, timeline, but I just, the subdivisions are taking so long to build that, uh, I, I can't remember everything on it for the decisions.
No, I don't think anybody can. Uh, that, back to the road service, and, and the dirt on the road service, uh, I talked to Peter Crane from Concom about this. Uh, he says, yo, unless, unless he starts getting run out of the wetlands, he, he has no issue with it. Uh, and I also talked with Kyle Holgren, and, uh, he said, you know, it's not really a big issue, it's just something that he is noting. And, you know, that they, they need to keep an eye on. But he, you know, he did not say that he really thought that, you know, okay, they should get that thing cleaned tomorrow. That's not his feeling.
Um, Norm, is, you can tell me if this is outrageous, but is there any reason we couldn't ask, uh, Blair Builders or Tom Larson when they intend to do Phase Five, which is, I think that's the connection of the two roads? You know, I, I'm sure they've got a timeline of some sort, I just, I was curious about it.
Well, we can ask...
Is it next spring, next fall, twenty-twenty-five?
Isn't that connection actually Phase Four?
I thought it was Phase Five, and Phase Four was that cul-de-sac that's sitting behind the subdivisions, but I could be wrong. I, I could, you might...
I think it is Phase Four.
Yeah.
I got funny... I got funny calling it was Phase 4.
The other thing, the only thing I would say there is that I believe he does not have, if he has any, only a couple of lots left to sell in Phase 3. So my guess is that, I, I would take a guess that probably first thing in the spring. He's hoping he's happening on Phase 4.
Or did he have a, did he have a problem? Getting, I thought there was some issue that he needed some permit or something like that, that he was having a hard time getting for what it was on Phase 4.
I don't recall anything.
The crossing of the, is it crossing or a pulpit or something like that?
It could be. It could be.
I believe the crossing is fully permanent now.
It is.
Okay, great.
I could be wrong, because, like Tim, my memory's not always great. But I will say, if I may answer the question that Tim asked, Phase 4 is the connection of Phase 2 and 3. Phase 5 is a 5A and a 5B, each of which is a cul-de-sac off the road, the main road.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Peter. I just, it, it's not something that I'm looking to hold plea to. I mean, it just was, or I shouldn't say plea, Tom or Blair Builders, just get an idea. Just for the town's perspective of when we're gonna connect those.
We can ask.
Okay. That's all I want to do. And if he doesn't answer, that's fine. We just put an email out there. It's not an official legal letter or anything.
Anything else on Bryce Lemon? Okay, next we have, uh...
Before you go on, Kevin, on the, on the Phase 2, if I read this correctly, as noted previously, there are several raised joints where the sidewalk pavement meets the residential driveways.
Yeah.
Raised joints must be addressed. My memory was from the site visit on the previous one, that they've, this has come up before. And I just want to call it out. The apron from the driveway, or the piece that goes from the actual traveled way to the limit of the property, that's, that's turned over to the town. And those joints should be flush. It's my understanding that the developer every so often holds off because the buyer doesn't always pay for top coat on their driveway. But on the aprons, I think they should meet the walk. I just wanted to call that out.
Okay.
Kevin, you can understand what I'm saying?
Yes. And, you know, I guess at this point, the only thing is, again, that, that amounts to paving work, which really cannot be done at this time of the year.
No, it can't be done, but...
What we're just saying, Norm, is that we should put this on a punch list for Clea because you know he's coming to town meeting to get Phase 2 accepted in May.
The thing is, until this is addressed, this will remain a bullet in Kyle Holgren's inspections.
Okay. I do have one question, Norman, and I apologize. It just came to my mind. Joe, do you get these reports from Quinn? Do you get copied on these?
I do. They're really good about making sure we see everything.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just want to make sure, so I want to make sure all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed between the town departments. So great. I'm glad you see these. So this will be on your radar too when these reports come in.
Okay, Brittenell Estates, next.
Okay, now is this the one I ask my question?
Yeah.
In Brittenell Estates, are all of the water, sewer, any electric, hell, even propane lines, if they're gonna use propane, are those all at code depths? I had heard, again, this is all hearsay, that some of those lines were not at code depth. And that is completely unacceptable to me. But again, it's hearsay. So that's why I wanted to ask Joe if there's been any inspection reports, or does he have any knowledge of things not at code depth?
Can I answer directly to the chair?
Yes, yes, please.
So, we, we being DPW, were contacted by the folks building the subdivision's engineer, I think it's Hanigan. They went to, they had to modify the previously approved design for water and sewer because of the culverts crossing the wetland. It's my understanding that changes in environmental regulations made the crossing much more complicated and resulted in less than ideal coverage for the sanitary sewer and the water crossing both the culverts and in the subdivision entire. It's not so much a capacity question. There was concern about having adequate cover over the water and sewer. And truly what drove the entire design was where the sewer crossed that culvert and ties into the existing sewer next to the Palm Station. The majority of the design looked to me to be adequate. I did push back initially and ask for profiles, and the engineer did provide profiles. To Carl Holgren's credit, there was one cul-de-sac where there wasn't adequate cover, and he caught it, and has since given that back to the designer and the owner of the subdivision. I haven't seen the final outcome of that piece yet, but the majority of the design did appear to be adequate. Public Works can't comment on depth of propane. That would all be on private property. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, Joe, I just was worried because typically, and again, I'm not a, I'm not a mechanical, but I remembered 18, 24 inches are typical depths for water and sewer lines, somewhere in that range.
Truth be told, Mr. Narwhal through the chair, we prefer to have at least four feet of cover.
Oh, God, okay.
Because frost can get quite deep here.
Okay.
Luckily, the water's moving most often, and on average wastewater lines are warmer than, you know, sewer. So they're less likely to freeze. But we want about four feet of cover. There's other issues associated with that, and some of it's loading. So it's not just, you know, chance of freezing. You have, if you get out from under, if you're below four feet, there's loading concerns. And what I mean by loading is, we want to see at least, the roadway bit has to be an H20 standard. Basically, how much truck traffic or car traffic can drive over those roads. So if you don't have that, or if you're covered, you don't have structural integrity to hold up the pipeline. You're gonna run the risk of deflection.
I guess, Joe, as long as you're, as long as you're okay with the design, I just, because it was PE stamped by Hanigan, I just wanted to make sure that it was, it was code-based and code-following, and, you know, we don't have issues like we did in Bear Hill with the road collapsing because of maybe some sub-base that wasn't done correctly. So that's the only reason I wanted to bring it up.
If they build it according to plan, I think we'll be okay. Did they push the limits of, of, you know, the design? You know, intended design? Yes, yes, they did. But as long as it's built according to plan, I think we'll be all right.
So I guess I asked a question, Norm. Who, who does those inspections when they lay the pipe in there? Is that, is that Carl coming out to bless that? And then having one of Joe or Joe's guys come out and make sure everything's correct? Or is it just saying the drawings, we built this to what the drawing says, which I have no faith in that, but that's my opinion?
I, I know Carl does, you know, he does come out and do some inspections at the times when they're putting that in. However, he isn't there certainly for the entire process. And I don't think Joe Buckley, I don't think he has the staff at this point to have anyone out there.
I know. And Dick, this is where you can jump on and start, Marilyn can kick me too. I just don't have the faith in people following drawings in this town like they should. So that's, I really don't want to see Joe get into another four years down the road, and you have pipes breaking.
I do feel that maybe that, if we could get Carl to come in more frequent to keep an eye on it and to help out DPW at the same time as he's helping us out.
Yeah, because if Carl's got a question, he can always call Joe's office and, and have somebody come over. And, and Joe, you have the right to tell the developer to hold off until you get there, or is that the building inspector that has that right?
I imagine the building inspector could stop them from working, but it's technically private property until the road is turned over.
Okay.
But here's the other thing. And so some tests that we do require that have to be proposed or prepared before we accept the sewer, you have to do a mandrel test, which basically you, you drag a device through the line to make sure that there's nothing deflected, so that it's actually a round pipe of the appropriate size.
Oh, that's the fiber optic, the fiber optic line you sent through it?
No, it's actually a mechanical mandrel.
Oh, okay.
It's like a bell that goes through the line to make sure that there's no deflection. They also do what's called an air test or a pressure test to make sure that the line holds air for a certain amount of time, and that checks for leaks. They are responsible for providing as-built or record drawings. So we'd have records of all the depths of pipe installed through that process. But the, this particular design, I don't think it would work if you didn't build it the way it's drawn. And they'd end up coming back. Somebody would have trouble. So, there's that also.
Joe, let me just ask you one last question. I have never on the board in my years seen any of those test reports, and maybe I'm just not remembering, come through the planning board. Is that something that would be in our files, or would that all get sent to you from builders?
I believe the ones for the sewers go to Carl's office. I think the ones for drinking water definitely go to us. I mean, the potable water, we have obviously pressure tests and bacteria tests. Those are big concerns for us. Those are in-house, and we have records of those. Because that could make all kinds of people sick, so.
Yeah. All right, good enough. I just, I don't remember, and maybe Norm or Dick or Marilyn or Kevin, I just, I don't remember seeing those in any report that I looked at that comes through from Carl, so.
No, I've never seen them.
No, I don't think we were going to get them.
Okay, good enough. Thanks, sir.
The only ones that I, I know are of the paving and like the gravel base from Yankee Engineering.
Oh, yeah, the asphalt test, we always get those.
We get those. But for the others, no.
I have talked to, if you, through the chair, Norm, I did talk to Carl about updating our requirements for sewers like this, and we're probably gonna do some CCTV inspection. But we haven't, it hasn't been formally drafted yet. And along those same lines, as I've said before, I have a really good rapport with the engineer, Carl, so we go back and forth quite a bit.
Yeah, you know, I think that's, the most important thing is that there is and appears is good communication between Hanigan, one of their engineers is Anderson, I think, and Carl, and you, Joe, and that, to me, is probably the most important thing. The only other thing that, I'm just looking at this report, and I appreciate Carl putting this thing under that first bullet. It should be noted that any work done as a part of the plan that the board hasn't approved is done at the developer's risk. And I'm just wondering at what point we are going to be having what we need to give a final approval. And I don't know, Dave, maybe, maybe you can give some, shed some light on that, or...
Yeah, I could put this as a follow-up item with Quinn and the developer and whoever else to get the plan out there for some type of look.
Yeah.
This plan has not been distributed as far as I'm aware.
You know, it would seem to me that we need a sign-off from Carl. I think we need a sign-off from Joe before, you know, we can approve whatever revisions have been made.
And legitimately, this should all came before us before they got started. I'm so tired of this. I guess, Norm, I've got the other question. And since we got Joe on, I'll ask. Those retaining walls, the key component that doesn't ever seem to happen is the engineer that did the design, being the structural engineer, is supposed to, I'll use the word bless, be there when it's being put together, make sure everything's going correctly, and and basically signs off on the quote as-built drawings. Has there been communication with you about that, and Tom Larson and Quinn? I just, I don't want to end up with the bridge that we have over in Bear Hill, is what I'm getting at. I just want to make sure this is done correctly, it's built correctly, there's no issues with construction, or retaining walls, or drainage from retaining walls, or a road that's going between the retaining walls. So that's my question.
Through the chair, unfortunately, I, I just know that the owner is responsible for hiring a structural engineer, an independent structural engineer to review the design, review both the design and installation. That person's gonna provide documentation to Quinn. It didn't come to DPW. At least I haven't seen it.
Let me ask this, Joe. Do you want to see it?
Yeah, of course.
All right. Well, that's, that's my point then, Norm, is that I think because this is, again, this is not something that's typical in Nutland, that we should make sure our director knows what's going on. Because the last time when the bridge got built, it was, I'm not saying it was transparent. There's the word I'm looking for. So I really want this to be transparent with Director Buckley, so that he's got all the documentation that we have. And again, I apologize, Joe, you're a PE, so you know more than me. But if something doesn't look right, I, I'd be more than happy that if you send something to the board that we can look into it or ask questions through Carl or through Tom Larson. So that's my only concern, because ultimately, you're gonna have to maintain this.
Yes.
Okay, you know, going back to the Quinn's December 27th report, below the last of the bullets, there is a reminder to the developer that all retaining walls in actual public construction must continue to be observed and certified by a structural engineer after construction is being built per design, blah, blah, blah. Obviously, we have not gotten any reports from the engineer.
I'd like to see a daily or weekly or monthly or something, that report, from that engineer telling me what's going on, what he's looked at, and where they're at. Because it's never happened in the past, and then after the fact, we said, oh, it was built correctly. Well, how do we know that? During construction, we don't even know if anybody was there.
So, you know, reports are limited to what Carl gives us on the rest of the subdivision from that engineer.
But yeah, but Carl's not, Carl's not a structural engineer. And he's not responsible for that retaining wall. So I guess what I'm asking, can the board maybe request through Blair or Tom Larson a weekly, monthly, I don't know, I'll leave it up to the board what they want to do, report on how that retaining wall is being put in from the structural engineer who's supposed to be observing it, going in and being built? Is that too much? You guys can tell me if I'm off in left field playing right.
At this time of year, I would say monthly would be fine.
Yeah, yeah, monthly would be fine, or at, you know, at every substantial stage of construction.
Yeah, like, remember when they're pouring the concrete for the, for the supports for the retaining wall? I would presume that somebody should be out there to make sure the pour is correct, and, you know, the, they've got the correct amount of rebar and all that stuff before that support gets poured, since it's part of the retaining wall. But again, it's, I'm not a structural engineer. I'm just half, half-baked from my experience, and that's it. So I just want to make sure we had something that could go into our files that down the road, if Director Buckley or anybody else that's in that department had questions, we got documentation to go back on.
Well, I think it's gone so far right now. If we don't get anything within the next week or two, we ought to shut the project down. Let's put it that way. Because to me, for crying out loud, you don't want, like you said, you don't want to last thing, find out, oh, my God, we gotta take the whole thing back up again.
Well, what happened? Dick, is, is what happened on Phase 1 in Bryce Lemon, that retaining wall, it was built correctly. My engineer sent a letter to the board saying it was built correctly. Well, we have no reports when it was, when it was in construction, when, how it was being built. So I, I just, I would like some, I liked, I'm a documentation person. I just like to see some.
I don't see why we can't require that.
Okay. Thanks.
So, we will let Mr. Blair and Mr. Larson know that we expect within the next two weeks a report from the structural engineer on his entire list of observations since the beginning of construction on the culverts.
Thank you, yes, I agree.
Can I make a comment to the chair?
Yes.
Two quick things, and Carl did a great job here listing it as previously noted, noted, certification from a Massachusetts structural engineer must be provided stating that the Arch Culver Crossing is Station 35 plus zero zero meet Mass DOT specification. So, please make sure it's a Massachusetts PE, structural PE, not New Hampshire or New York.
Aw, come on, how about Arkansas?
Joe, while you bring that up, there's been a lot of arguments on the roads in the town meeting Mass DOT, or this culvert meeting Mass DOT, as opposed to, is it ASIA, or, I'm sorry, ASTO?
ASTO.
ASTO. The structural engineer on the bridge on Bear Hill didn't follow Mass DOT specs to build that, he followed ASTO. And I'm struggling when I see this sentence by Carl, because ASTO and Mass DOT are completely different, they might be in some areas the same, but there are differences.
There are differences, and a lot of the Mass DOT specifications borrow from the ASTO stuff, so I'm good with the Mass DOT specification.
Okay, good enough, thanks.
The only other thing I would suggest, somebody should maybe look at the drawings and find out who stamped the, what they're building. See if it's the same person.
Yeah, because the culvert should have a structural engineer, not a mechanical engineer, stamping it.
Right, it should be somebody different.
I don't, I don't think we have any details of those culverts, do we?
Yeah, there's a problem, Norm, that's why I'm trying to get Dick not wound up with me either. We still don't have the final details of how that design was gonna be done.
And I had to add, I mean, thank God, Pete, Peter Crane was here. I questioned the four arch culverts, why putting so many in there when you got a little dinky pipe, you know, taking the water, but it's like a flash flood type of thing to take the water.
Maybe with that request, Norm, for the reports, we could ask for the detailed set of installation drawings for that crossing, that culvert crossing.
I don't see why not.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, and I'd like Director Buckley to get copied on that, too.
Heaven only knows what's gonna happen in 50 years.
Yeah.
Thing is, I watched them for a little while while they were putting in some of those foundation blocks and all that kind of nice stuff. And to be perfectly honest with you, the way they were moving around there, I'm almost wondering if they weren't designing it as they went.
Norm, that, when we got those pictures two or three weeks ago, and saw the blocks laying next to each other, that was sort of my impression, but again, I'm an electrical, not a mechanical, so I can't comment too heavily.
Anyway. Okay, anything else on Brittonville Estates? Well, next up is, uh...
Actually, there's a trail.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a request to get information out there about the trail, so that correspondence was sent to the applicant, the developer, and then there's a response.
There's a reply there, I think, yeah.
Reply, yeah. Regarding a plan to show the location of the real trail. So, that's been acknowledged. On the idea.
Yeah.
And it's also an open item on the consulting engineer reports.
Okay.
Could you read that to me? I can't, I'm at a weird angle.
Basically, the applicant is indicating a proposed location for the real trail, a plan to show it, someplace between lots 28R and 27C perhaps, with the goal that it connects to the Wash Uzic Greenways.
So, at least that's in the works.
Yes.
Okay, good.
I appreciate that.
Okay, Bear Hill Two.
Yeah. Norm, I read through the bullets that, and, again, I apologize, Joe, I'm asking you a lot of questions. Is Tom or anybody getting in touch with you for these camera inspection reviews, or got you files, or, you know, have, you know, the inserts are recommended for catch basins? Is any of that stuff ever getting communicated to you, or is it just, do we gotta rough them up from the planning board's perspective?
Oh, okay, I'll answer through the chair to Mr. Narwald. I believe the recommended inserts for the catch basins is a conservation commission issue, and not so much public works.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Basically, what they're trying to do there is to control some of the silk coming off the site, because they have a lot of fines that washed out, made a mess going down the road.
Okay.
The camera inspections, they dropped three CDs, three DVDs with the information off in my office, we just haven't had a chance to look at them yet.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure, Joe, you had them, as long as you got them, I'm fine, because that was the question, we didn't know if you had them yet.
We got them, but I may have to send them back, because oddly enough, I can't find a computer with a DVD player.
Oh. You're telling me at the antiquated Rutland Computer Center, there's no DVD players?
I'll see what I can take up.
If you need one, I might have a USB I can loan you.
And I made a mistake to the chair on the previous subdivision, when you asked for the information on the bridge, or culvert crossing, could we get a schedule?
A scheduling, a when they're gonna be doing things?
Yeah.
Because to Joe's point, Norm, I mean, in my old days, there'd be like a, you know, Microsoft project or something like that, of when they were gonna bring the concrete guys in, when they were gonna bring the blocks in, when they were gonna bring in the gravel, when they were gonna put in drainage, all that stuff would be laid out, as opposed to willy-nilly, we just do it as we go.
The only problem I see that is that, you know, all of that is so weather-related.
Well, no, they're definitely gonna lose some time, it's just, to Mr. Narwald's point, you know, concrete does require a certain strength test and time, and when you place that, you have to, it's a certain amount of time before you go on to the next placement.
I hope they didn't pour any concrete today.
And maybe, maybe we put that as a request for the structural engineer, since he's overseeing this, he should probably have a schedule of how it's going in. That would be my opinion.
Well, you know, we'll try it.
Yeah, because he signed off on the drawing, so he's gotta know how they're built, and the timeframe, and, you know, I'm used to like, what's the word, I'm looking for milestones, or whole points, things like that for a schedule. Anyhow.
Critical path, Mr. Narwald, critical path.
Oh, God, Joe, I know that all too well, and I'm usually in the middle of being an electrical, I'm always critical path.
I think, before I forget to the chair, I may reach out to Carl about the bridge, there's been enough here that I have genuine concerns.
You still have concerns?
Well, I'd like to see the drawings, I'd like to see the schedule.
Okay.
I'm not gonna hold up the project, but I'm gonna ask appropriate questions.
Yeah, please do. Okay, anything else on the subdivisions?
Yeah, I think on Bear Hill Two, well, there's a question about the Open Space Fund, so there was a request made relative to the House contribution. The information was sent to the developer, we're still waiting for a response on that.
Okay.
And then, there was another report for Bear Hill, January 7th. And then for Bear Hill, you have a subdivision control agreement, a tri-party.
Is that something we need to sign, David?
Yes.
I'm confused, because, oh, this is Bear Hill Two, I apologize. I keep thinking Bear Hill, I'm like, that sucker better have been signed years ago. This is Bear Hill Two, thank.
We've had this for a little while.
Did I?
We've had this for a little while, right? We didn't just get this.
No, we've had it for, I'm not even sure how long we've had this, yep. We wanted to take a quick look at it, to see how it matches up against other, are there such agreements?
Have you had any chance to look at that?
Yeah, so, let me just get my notes here. In general, it matches up to the other agreements in the big picture, there's boilerplate language here. Where it's not the same is on a particular, so this is referring to two plans. When was the original subdivision plan? Then there was apparently some A and R plan that was done in 2015, which further modified the lots, to show on the original subdivision plan.
That allowed the lots along Brittonell and Palm Augusta to be built.
Yeah, and it also added another lot in Bear Hill itself.
Yep.
So, there's two plans being referenced, there's another lot created. I don't know the full history of this, whether the board's aware of that, or not.
The only thing I wanted to make sure about this, Dave, and since, hopefully, Joe's still here, is this agreement has to have someone in here about a private sewer system, because those lots on Brittonell and Palm Augusta are part of a private sewer system. They're not owned by the town. So, somewhere in here, and again, maybe I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but I believe those should be covered in this subdivision document, indicating that those are, that's a private sewer system, on whatever, the modified lots that we did for the A and Rs. Is that, am I wrong?
Oh, you're right, you're right on.
I missed that tail letter, that which subdivision is this?
This is Bear Hill Two, Joe, the, the, those lots out front that run up Brittonell are part of the Bear Hill Two subdivision, and they have private sewers running to them. As far as I know, they're not town-owned, they were, they were put in as private sewers, and I just wanted to make sure somewhere in this document that those lots were recorded as private sewers, so if there's any, basically what I'm trying to do is if you gotta go and repair that, the individual landowner's paying for it, the town's not paying for it.
So, the, so this agreement that you're reviewing, if I can answer you directly, is for houses that have been there for several years?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. You are correct.
My memory may really be failing me, but Tim, I think the houses you're talking about were not a part of Bear Hill.
They were originally, but didn't you break them off, become A and Rs? But...
Yeah, I don't think they were ever a part of the Bear Hill subdivision. Those were all A and Rs, the, what, one, two, three, four houses on Brittonville Drive, they've all got E1 pumps, pumping all the way up the hill.
I think the first plans that we got of this, those, the houses were actually up on Bear Hill, and their back lots went down to Palm Augusta, and then Cleed came back in, and I think 2015, and A and R'd those lots, to put the houses on Palm Augusta and Brittonell, and then that little road that goes up on Bear Hill Drive. So, I think originally they were part of the Bear Hill subdivision, but they got changed. Somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, I don't, my memory doesn't go six years ago.
I think, I think you're right, in all honesty, you know, I'm way back.
Do you have the plan that accompanies this agreement?
Yeah, the plan exists, has a paper copy in the board's packet that, for the members who are here tonight. I believe it was sent out to the rest of the board, if not, I have the paper copies right here.
I've only got, yeah, all I've got, Dave, is I've got Zottley's, and, I got Zottley's and Zottley's, I got two copies of Zottley's in my packet.
Was that sent out separately?
Dave, I'm sorry to interrupt you, did you send it to me?
I don't believe so, this was a board correspondence.
Let me see if I can find it.
Hey, look.
You may not have it. If the board wants to hold this until the next meeting, I'm sure you can do that, and get the rest of this information out to you. If there's any other questions, we can try to understand what those are between now and when you get this information.
Can we do that, Norm? Just table this, and, because I, I really wanna pull out the plans from Bear Hill Two, and make sure this legal document, we just don't sign without knowing all of the previous, because Cleed came in and did a bunch of changes, if I remember right, where this was all one, gonna be one subdivision, and then because he wanted to build those lots on Palm Augusta and Brittonell, he A and R'd them and took them out of the subdivision, and then he also added that little stretch up the old Bear Hill Road that used to go up to Mr. Helly's place, he put houses up there, so I'd just like to have all the drawings out in front of us for the next meeting, all of the revisions and everything, so we're making sure that we're gonna sign a document that's correct.
The thing is, i- if he took those houses out of the Bear Hill subdivision, then we can't put any language in the Bear Hill Two subdivision control agreement about those.
Oh, I agree with you, I agree with you, Norm, if those are true A and R lots, that I'm hoping in their deeds, it says that those are private septic systems, but that's not our, I don't think that's our control, that's, I guess, the assessors, and I don't know whose control it is. I just, I'm a stickler, and I know Joe's, I've talked to him about this before, on his watch, there'll be no more private sewer systems going in this town, if he has anything to say about it.
Yeah. To me, those are just plain scary.
Yeah.
So, let's find out for sure.
All I wanna do is just make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's, and if it's not in there, they were pulled out, then great, let's go with this document, but I just wanna make sure, and I don't, I don't have the confidence, because that was six years ago? Almost seven now?
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll pull up plans and look at them.
Great, thanks.
Okay, so we're gonna hold the subdivision, the signing of the subdivision control agreement to our next meeting. And... And, and, and... Oh. I'm just, maybe I'm really getting picky here. I'm just, maybe I'm really getting picky here. Uh, but there's the subdivision control agreement, which you, you all have that, right? Several pages. But then, following that last page, there's a release of covenant.
No, 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 we're not gonna release the covenant, are we?
Well, yeah, when, when they, when you sign the subdivision control agreement, that does normally release the covenant. Because, the thing is, the covenant says they won't build a house until basically construction is complete. Okay, by putting up the bond for the construction, they, they can stop, they can build houses, you know, and sell them. Without...
But is that road, is that road complete, Norm?
No.
Then, we don't wanna release the covenant, do we?
We always do.
Okay.
Because they're putting up a...
I thought we held onto it till the road was completed, but maybe I'm...
They're putting, they're putting up a guarantee that they will complete the road.
Okay.
That, that's what the subdivision control agreement is.
But on the release of covenant, there is no name on it, for what subdivision?
That's, that was, that's why I brought it up. Uh, it, it says release of covenant, and it doesn't say for what, other than the deed reference.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seems to me there should be a...
A subdivision name on it, or something?
Yeah, yeah.
But, Norm, is that also releasing the bond?
No.
'Cause I see that, um, which the agreement is subject to the sum of $140,000. What is that, $140,000?
Okay. The, the last sentence. This release of covenant is contingent upon the execution, delivery, and recording of a tri-party agreement, which is the subdivision control agreement.
Okay. So, when, when we sign this off, we can release this covenant, and they can get their $140,000 back, which they put up for the covenant, okay?
No. They, they don't get that $140,000 back.
Which agreement? I thought that's what this... Reread this again.
They, they get that money back when we are satisfied that the subdivision has been completed, uh, as required, and it is accepted by the town.
Yeah, we usually, we hold on to something a year after, just to make sure there's no failures or anything?
Ten percent, ten percent.
Ten percent, yeah, okay, all right. I apologize, I, when I read this, it sounded like we were allowing them to get their $140,000, that's where I was struggling with this.
Oh, no, 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 no. Not a chance.
Because, it said the release of the covenant is contingent upon execution, delivery, and recording of the tri-party agreement. And, which, it says which agreement is the subdivision control, the sum of $140,000. So that's why I was struggling. It says the release, so, and execution by recording it. That's why, again, I'm not an attorney, but it just seemed like, hold on, did we let them take the money back?
No.
When they record this? Okay. That $140,000 is what we were talking about, the bonding for the road, correct?
Yep.
Okay, good enough, thanks.
Anyways, everybody agree that there should be a little bit more language on that release of covenant, saying what it's all about?
Agreed, there's a road on it.
Dave, you got that?
Yeah.
That's what I mean, I, I don't know, just, you know, it ju- it just sounds to me like, you know, hey, this, it could be anything.
Yeah, you could take this and run it over to who knows what.
Yeah.
Slip it under the door.
Okay. Anything else on the subdivisions?
I had some technical difficulties, I missed some of the last, that conversation, I couldn't find the drawing. Has that issue been continued?
On...
Yes.
Bear Hill?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna continue it right, Norm, until our next meeting, when we have the drawings laid out, we can look at everything?
Yeah.
Actually, I'm gonna send out this information well in advance of that. I'll send it out electronically, have a paper backup. Uh, should there be any questions in the meantime, we could get those questions circulated back, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I've gotta, Dave, I gotta come up, because I don't, I don't know if we got all the electro- I don't know if they gave us all the electronic PDFs of all those drawings, so...
Well, I think, there's, there are plans referenced in the subdivision control agreement that are the applicable plans to this agreement. Those plans will be submitted to the board. Those are the plans specifically referenced here. This, this is one plan, lots one B to five revision, and lot seven to fourteen. These are two separate plans, these are the plans on record reflecting the board's actions. Those plans will be submitted to the board, so that the board can now look at the agreement, look at the plans that go with the agreement. And if the board wants any of this information here, the certificate of approval has conditions relative to what kind of sewer system could be installed or not, and other such conditions, and also the covenant. So this is really the conditions that apply to this agreement. So if that information can be submitted well in advance of the meeting, to give the board a fair chance to take a look at it.
Yeah.
And then be prepared for, to ask questions or have follow-up comments at the next meeting, just in the interest of time, I would think.
I just, I just wanna take a look at the plans and see those lots that were talked about there, if those are just lots on the U-shaped Arrowhead Way, and those other lots that were built, were taken out of the subdivision, and, um, put into a A and R, and they're not part of the subdivision. So, that's all, I just wanna take a look at those, I'll probably, it'll be this week, it'll be next week, I might stop up, Dave, I'll give you a call, and just stop up and take a look at those drawings.
Dave, are you gonna send those out, 'cause I was unable to locate them?
Yeah, if you'd like that information as well, I can do that.
Thank you, especially 'cause I, um, it's, it's the policy, since I've been there, we don't want any more private sewer systems. I mean, onsite subsurface disposal is fine, sewers that are controlled by homeowners agreements or stuff like that, I'd rather not have them.
I can certainly understand that. Anything else on the subdivisions, at all, anywhere? No, hearing nothing, we'll move on to open space and recreation plan. And actually, Joe, I thank you for joining our meeting, I think. Does anybody have any more questions for Joe?
Nope.
No.
Thank you for joining us, though.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome to stay, but...
Um, I just wanna say thanks for having me in, and, uh, everybody try and stay healthy.
Yeah, you too. Okay. Open space and recreation plan.
Something that was brought up a couple meetings ago, I believe, and this was in the open space plan of 2017. And it was what the planning board represents. And, uh, I just want everybody to be aware of it.
Well, do you wanna take a few minutes and just go through anything that is listed as planning board?
Well, Central Mass Lost Village Scenic Byway to enhance natural, historic, and recreational resource along 122A.
Now, they're doing, they're doing something about kiosks and that sort of thing out there?
The kiosk has been down there some way, way back. It was prior to Helen Viner and Addison Redfield, myself were on the board at that time. And, um, so it's been many years. And it's been...
Is that from the dick that, uh, maybe we should, um, get in touch with Sheila as part of the 300th, that they might wanna get involved with that?
Uh, well, the only thing is, down there that Dave has been working on, and I'm hoping Dave is gonna punch in here and say a few things, and, um, but, right at the moment, it was set up between Oakham, uh, excuse me, Taxton all the way out to Petersham. They were gonna extend it on, and I don't know if they ever did, to Orange. But, uh, Oakham had such a problem with the select board, they would not allow them to put it in certain areas. Beautiful areas, near how vegetables stand down there, it was an excellent spot, but the people made, uh, made some comments and got everybody nervous, and that was it. But anyways, it's, it's, yeah?
What is, what is the fund, say, DLTA mean? What does that mean, is that like a, uh, account, or a, uh, a fund that we're getting from the state to do that?
Yeah, it's called Central Mass Regional Planning, and we can ask Dave, 'cause I am...
Yeah, if you want me to provide an update on this, as the board recalls, uh, about last March or so, the board, staff brought to the board a suggested plan, to research and look at prior recommendations made in reports that pertain to the scenic byway, and to see if, if the, um, to see if the recommendations were implemented. And if so, to, to take a look to see if there's a plan to further look at those recommendations, that come up with an implementation strategy, and just, you know, touch base on this issue. So, the board agreed in policy that that was something that was, that should be pursued. So staff working with the Regional Planning Commission was awarded a district local technical assistance, DLTA grant, for...
Oh, great.
For an amount of about eight to $10,000, uh, for this very project. So, I will be providing a more thorough, a thorough brief on this in time. The project has been closed out for this year, the Regional Planning Commission is working on a report. Once they have that report, I'll distribute it to the planning board, we can have a greater discussion on this. Um, one thing that Dick indicated was that there's a kiosk. The part of this project was to update the kiosk, 'cause the board also recalls, over the last couple of months, staff brought this to the board, brought the kiosk and the contents to the board, to see if the board was interested in offering recommendations to revise the content on that kiosk board. The board provided several recommendations. Those were referred back to the Regional Planning Commission for updates to the kiosk. So we're expecting as a deliverable, a large-sized poster that can be inserted into the kiosk. And if we have the file, we'll keep our options open to use it in other ways. We would also intend to put this on the town's website in the various locations. And we have been working with the, we are aware of the 300th anniversary and the importance of that. And several of the items that were listed on their brochure for the year have been brought to the kiosk, as well as links to the 300th Anniversary Committee and the town's website for more information. So that's a brief update on that, a further update will be provided in due course.
Okay, great, thanks, Dave.
So as you can see, anyways, there has been a, yeah, planning board has been involved in a few of these things, and luckily enough, they have been proceeding slowly. But I'm, I'm hoping that the majority of the stuff will be taken care of before the next open space and direct phase.
Are we gonna do anything, Norm, with, there was one up there about they continue to apply and evolve the town scenic road bylaws, and that's, I know it's a low priority, but it does just say planning board. Is there any thought process of doing that down the road, or? 'Cause I know we've had some, what word I'm looking for, some questions on how it's applied.
Uh, I, I guess, well, you know, two comments, obviously, you know, we had the proposal come in from the historical commission.
Yes.
Several roads, which they never did follow up on. I have no idea where they're going on that. Uh, I, I would kinda tend to think they may come back, you know, at the May town meeting, uh, looking for some designation, and, uh, you know, i- i- in, in that respect, certainly, uh, we would, you know, give them whatever assistance that we really feel we can, uh, to forward that. Uh, as far as the bylaw itself, uh, and this is just kind of an aside, I guess, the Ad Hoc Bylaw Committee, uh, has spent significant amount of time doing some rewording, not really changing the, you know, the effect of the scenic road bylaw, but changing some of the wording to maybe make it more clear, and, and that sort of thing. And at least, at this point, we are planning on bringing, it's the first five chapters of our general bylaws to town meeting in May. And, uh, the scenic road bylaw will be a part of that.
Well, that, that better go through our group, isn't that a planning board requirement? I'm, I'm sort of putting my stake in the ground right now.
The, the...
Shouldn't that go through Marilyn's group, and then through the planning board?
No, it's a general bylaw.
It's a general bylaw?
Yeah, it's not a zoning bylaw, so therefore that would not be the case.
Mr. Chair, the, uh, the scenic roads will not be, is not part of chapters one through five.
Oh, it isn't?
No, it's in, it's in chapter six.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay, I just, I, I appreciate the clarification, I thought, since we spent time on it, that it was, uh, under a zoning bylaw.
Anyway, as I recall, we didn't change the effect of the scenic road bylaw, really.
No, in fact, we went out of our way to not change the impacts of it.
Yeah. So... I just wondered if that was gonna be one of the things.
What's that?
I thought that was gonna be one of the things that we would be bringing.
No, that's public and private ways, that's chapter six.
Oh, okay. Let's see, next one I see for planning board says enhance blockability of Rutland Center.
Already done.
I guess, they got that sidewalk thing?
That's that plan that goes up Palmagussit all the way to, uh, what, uh, how far does that go, that walkway goes all the way up to, uh, the two, the two subdivisions that are across from each other?
Yeah, something like that, I, I don't...
Oh, or, uh...
Mr. Chair.
East and West, and I forget the name of them, I apologize, but that's a significant walkway increase.
Well, yeah, but, Dave?
Uh, no, no, so, what, I think this pertains more directly to the, to the center itself.
Yeah.
So recently, the DPW director was successful in getting monies to do sidewalk improvements from the town center around where Heavy Ebbes is, down towards the, uh, down to the Heights.
Heights, yeah.
So that's, that's the blockability of the Rutland Center per se, in the center area, not further down on 156, as far as I understand it.
Yeah.
So that seems to be something that you can check off as, as being done, but not necessarily by the planning board, but by the DPW.
Just as, and interesting, this is an aside, talking with, with Joe Buckley, uh, there's the tip project for Palmagussit Road that goes down to whichever it is, Marjorie Lane, Britnell Lane, or whatever.
Tip coast to Ridgefield Ave.
Yeah, but, but apparently, uh, he just got a notice from the state that they're interested in...
The rest?
The rest of Palmagussit Road.
And Maple Ave.
Oh, really?
And Route 68 again.
How many times are they gonna have to do that one before they get...
So, Norm, you're telling me the state guys are gonna do the roads all the way to where it was finished? 'Cause they did it from 68 down to a specific area on Palmagussit already.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I don't know what extent that, that we're talking, it's just that, uh, apparently, uh, because, see, the, the, the tip project is federal money.
Yeah.
And, uh, this is the state coming in and saying, yeah, we wanna do some stuff, too.
Oh, maybe some of that COVID money that we need to repair some of the roads, infrastructure.
Yeah, Peter?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Buckley did join us at a conservation commission meeting recently, and explained that the Route 68 one is not as certain as the rest of Palmagussit Road. So, they're very sure they're gonna do Palmagussit from the end of the tip all the way north. But, the original plans were to do 68 also, but that has become under question with timing and money. And I haven't heard anything about Maple either way, but that was not part of our discussion.
Yeah, all I would say, Peter, is Palmagussit from 68 down to, I don't know if it was Campbell Street or someplace, they already did the tearing up and replacing and all that stuff, but they stopped. So, that part of Palmagussit, if I'm not mistaken, has already been repaired three, four years ago, five years ago?
It was some time ago, yes.
Yeah, and they can do it again.
Yeah.
State money.
I guess so, I'll shut up.
Exactly.
It's only my tax dollars. It's only my tax dollars. Okay.
Okay, I see another planning board one there. I continue to update zoning subdivision and open space special permit regulations.
Yeah, that one to seven years to do that. Oh, wait a minute, time's up.
Yeah.
That's why.
That 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 might be a point for discussion on our next agenda item.
Yeah, I was thinking that, Norm.
Business meeting?
Yeah. Let's see.
That it? Nope, good one.
Uh, page two is one. Research opportunities to apply conservation design techniques to preserve and connect open spaces in Rutland. Well.
Didn't we do that, Norm, by by putting in the lit into our subdivision bylaws, the lit?
You know, yeah, yeah, somewhat. But you know, even just uh requiring connection to the rail trail on the states.
Yep, I think we've done some work on that. We could actually take a partial check off on that.
I can't, you know, it hasn't been ignored. Well, I see one more on the next page. It's com combination of Conservation Commission, Planning Board, D P W, and I'm assuming that's Town Administrator.
Cooperate with the state.
Yeah.
Hey, where's the ski trails? I want to know about those.
Uh, sorry, but they were taken down a few years ago. All right.
Cross-country ski.
They were taken down fifty something years ago.
Cross-country ski trails, that's the rail trail in the winter.
Exactly.
Okay.
In the prison camp.
But haven't we sort of done that by replacing the culverts and stuff like that? Haven't we sort of, you know, that that culvert in fifty six that's gonna be replaced, isn't that? We're doing that, we're cooperating with the state to get that done?
You talking about the dam?
No, remember, and I can't remember if we did or if it's gotta be done. Didn't we replace the uh the on fifty six, the culvert that goes that the rail trail goes through or under the road? Didn't that get replaced a while back because the road was closed and they were working on?
Put the tunnel, put the tunnel in.
Yeah, the tunnel.
Yeah, put the tunnel in, yeah.
Yeah.
That was before this version of the O S R P.
Yeah.
Okay, I was trying to take credit for something that we'd already done.
Okay, anything else on open space and recreation?
And I I, like I said once before, I did send a letter to the people that own the um property next to Putnam Park and I never heard back. And I don't intend on trying again until springtime when I could physically walk up there and even walk around.
Yeah.
Hopefully, I'll physically be well to do it.
So is there any conclusions to be drawn with what we just took a look at?
I think other than at least it seems on most of them, there's been some progress or some movement.
Some movement, and I would like the planning board to stay abreast of it, please. Instead of two thousand seventeen and almost five years have lapsed and it's one of the first times we've ever looked at this, so. I feel it's something that. Gonna a little bit of observing. And maybe sidewalks too in the summertime.
That doesn't hurt.
No.
But not tonight.
Uh, no. The only sidewalk I was seeing is the Pellet Stone.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may make a comment about what Mr. Williams just said. He made a very good point that, like many other plans, the twenty seventeen open space and recreation plan was published, distributed, and then everybody threw it in the drawer and forgot about it.
Yeah.
There is, we are, the Conservation Commission, who's actually the superior committee today, is hoping that when the next edition is published. That we can make the open space committee a permanent committee standing by itself, not as part of CONCOM, but standing by itself. To periodically review the update, the status of everything with the various town bodies, the the different officials and boards. To to help with that so that they don't be forgotten.
And also, this is a chapter of the master plan. And because of the good timing here, which we'll be getting to an update on the master plan, phase one and phase two in a moment. But given the good timing here, this is gonna be brought into the master plan itself as a chapter. So it's anticipated that the implementation of the master plan collectively is going to incorporate encompass all the chapters. So there's another check for implementation besides the possible recommendation to have the open space committee as a standing committee. So you can try to work together on. Pardon me, one second, please.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
So we can try to work together and, you know, try to have a manageable process to implement in general all the things in the master plan. Working in the collective spirit like you're talking about, I think would be would be wise. Uh, thank you. What's that, Tim?
Oh, I just, I was gonna, Dave, what I've taken away from this is we'll actually be able to, instead of have separate documents. This open space would be a a section of the master plan that somebody could have one document and be able to go through and and put check marks as completed. And also review. I like that because in the past, Rutland seems to have documents all over the place. And if we had one central with the master plan with everything in it, I think that's a phenomenal idea.
If there are, there are questions about the frequency of updates of each. The O S R P has a mandated frequency of update and I don't know what the master plan requirements are anywhere if there are. I know that we haven't done it in twenty years, more or less. But the O S R P can't may be updated more frequently than the master plan. And so that's going to, if it's not planned for appropriately in terms of how we negotiate the different planning structures within the town. We're going to run into much the same problem we've had in the past.
Yeah.
Yes.
The other thing is I don't I don't think the master plan is going to go into this kind of detail.
Right.
Of something like this, that's that's not.
Well, the master plan is gonna take the open space work and bring that in as a chapter in entirety.
Yeah, but but not in this deep this kind of detail.
Yes, in that kind of detail, it's gonna bring in, this is from the open space plan from twenty seventeen. Those are recommendations made in that, that is the chapter.
Word for word?
That is part of the chapter. So however they formulate formulate their recommendations, that's part of the chapter, that comes into it.
Okay, I wasn't thinking that that would be the case.
Yeah, it's part of the.
Okay.
So the O S R P, I believe, is expected, is hoped to be completed this year and and put through the state. The other piece of it is that we also have a state approval process we have to follow in the O S R P.
Okay. Anything else on that one? Business meeting. Discussion by the board for topics for a business meeting.
I say we set the date first.
I would rather not set a date until we have some idea what we're gonna talk about. I don't want to come in here and everybody just stand there looking at each other.
I want some new language in our subdivision rules and regulations for anything new that comes through the D O A. Oh, wait a minute, it just happened. No, we we need update.
Point here is that we've we've got to make sure that, because we haven't looked at that subdivision regs in years. And there might be new regs from the state that we're just not applying for roads for, and again, I'm shooting from the hip, spacing. Uh, construction requirements, things like that. We just, I I think we need to get it updated. And and also, if there's any to you, to the point we made earlier, if there's any new lit recommendations or anything from the state for recommendations for greens. Since David, you could tell me, are we a green, are we a green town? Did we get that certification?
Yes, we did.
Yes, some time ago.
Okay, so we should take an opportunity to try to put some of that into our sub. And I don't know what that is. I I I guess I'd ask for some, you know, Dave or somebody to do some research and find out is there's is there other communities that are green communities that have added anything in their subdivision bylaws? But I think to Dick's point, we, I I mean, I I personally think it's gonna be multiple business meetings, but that's my opinion to to go through the subdivisions. I think we should pick a section for a meeting and say, are we gonna do section one, two, and three? And that's what we're gonna focus on. I I like what Marilyn did with the um uh the apartment, the accessory apartment. We attacked it section by section. It was a great, a great way to do it, and then we agree upon everything and then move on.
Okay, I I I'm thinking a little bit differently on this one. I guess I'm gonna start out by just saying that. For us alone to look at our subdivision regulations and do a good job of updating them.
Oh.
I I think is.
A too big a task, Norm?
Not just too big a task, too complicated.
Right.
Yes.
And and just as with the accessory apartment dwelling, where did that start?
By going out and getting other ones and using them as a templates?
No, it didn't.
Oh, I thought I thought that's how that got put together.
Where did it start? C M R P C?
Well, yeah, I mean, first it started with the community indicating a need for it. Then working with the Regional Planning Committee, staff working with the Regional Planning Commission, with the planning board endorsing it as a policy.
Yeah.
To proceed, and then it worked itself out, yes.
In 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 other words, we got outside help.
Yeah.
To do it.
Weren't we gonna do that, Norm, before the pandemic? We were going to have the C M R P C because they had some um some monies that they could help us out with reviewing our subdivision bylaws. Um, I remember that, I don't know if anybody else does, but I thought that they were gonna help us out by going through and giving us recommendations. Maybe they already did, and I just don't remember it.
I I don't recall anything from C M R P C.
Yeah, me neither.
I'm not saying there wasn't, I I don't recall.
Please refresh my memory, I can't remember the guy's name that used to work for him but worked uh on on his own except for business that came in and did the zoning.
Oh, did it Scannell?
Scannell.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bill Scannell, he was phenomenal.
Bill Scannell, yeah.
And to me, that's the ideal person, if you want somebody to try to help out, that that would be.
I don't think he's probably doing that anymore.
He probably is not.
No.
But there again, there are gonna be other people like him.
Yeah, okay, the the bottom line on on this whole thing, and I was just mentioning this to Dave earlier this week. Our administrative account is rather plush right now.
Let's hire Carl to do this then.
Well, you know, and you know, I I even brought that up, that, you know, maybe maybe we could have Carl look at it. I don't know who's the person to have look at or or person, agency, or whenever. What I am saying is, I think it might be reasonable, we can spend some money on it.
Excellent, I like that, Norm.
Rather than just having to sit down and hammer it, you know, amongst themselves.
Well, I remember us talking about using Carl because he just doesn't work for Rutland, he works for multiple towns. And he has a lot of experience in subdivision bylaws, um, structural, you know, stuff like that. That's not his expertise, but in road construction and subdivision bylaws, he does have a a fair amount of experience with other towns. So, you know, Charlton Holden, things like that, so it might be a good, it it couldn't hurt if if Dave would talk to um Mr. Conte or or Carl. And see if that's something they'd like to take on as a consultant work.
One one thing I I, if I hang around long enough, I want to make sure the open space that we have here will stay here and not lose it. Why have all this all the surveys we've ever taken in this town? What is one of the most things that pop up why the people moved to this town was the open space?
Yeah.
And we're losing, we're gonna be losing it.
Oh.
And to me, for crying out loud, if we don't start somehow saving it.
So you're actually talking about a second uh second conversation here, a second, a second topic?
Yeah.
Could be or be part, could be part of the subdivision rules and regulations. To me, for crying out loud, right now, it ticks me off H O A or whatever it is down here at Bryce Lemon for a big chunk of property, they're never gonna go with it. It should have been donated to the town, in my opinion, because it was so close to Putnam Park, it could have been an extension of Putnam Park, that type of thing. I mean, the town is gonna come up with money to make for recreation, no. Any subdivision that's now should be some kind of a recreation or something for the town.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, I think we're talking at topics and that's a really good topic to the chair.
That might, Marilyn, you got a good point, that might be a topic for a business meeting. And then the subdivision bylaws might be a good topic to send out and have somebody work on.
Right.
Well, the thing is, I'm not saying that we don't need to do work on that.
No, no.
But we we, it's a lot easier if we have a new fresh basis to work from.
Somebody that has the the new knowledge of the rules and regulations that we're not totally up on.
Oh, yeah, because I I'd like to reduce the five hundred foot if you have a pig farm down to thirty feet.
Okay. I will, I will root for some subdivision.
I wanted to bring up for the business meeting is, there's a, I I think in our business meeting, we should prioritize, come up with a list in our business meeting. Of what bylaws, zoning bylaws, we want to attack in in set up sort of like a two or three year plan of how we're gonna do or which ones we're gonna go after. And and again, plans change, I get that, but at least we have something on paper on, you know, like, we we want to go after a signed bylaw this year. We we want to update the marijuana bylaw next year. I mean, just something like that, so A, it gives Marilyn an idea of where we're going, and B, it sort of gives us a plan.
Mm-hmm, good idea.
Noise bylaw first.
Especially for those out cows in town, you gotta shut those things up, man, they're like.
I was referring to me also.
Peter.
Uh, Mr. Chair, there's been, uh, the, not this past time meeting, but the one before with the citizen petition. Uh, modified section, what, eleven A, ten A, whatever, of zoning. Created some inconsistencies and some problems in the bylaws, in the zoning bylaw. In addition, there are a number of references inside that zoning bylaw that don't make sense. They make reference to sections and articles that did not exist when they were written. So I would imagine through the bylaw subcommittee, but that's all gotta be worked through and and made consistent and correct throughout the zoning bylaw.
Based upon.
And to Peter's point, that's what I was thinking of.
Excuse me, I'm not sure.
Coming up with a list of how we want to attack it.
I'm not sure if you can see us in here or not, maybe that's probably what the what the issue is with the delay. So if that's the case, I apologize. The issue with the eleven A is something that we are aware of from the last time when that was made. That's in the that's in the work plan that I have, things that I'll be bringing to the board. Whether the board wants to also be thinking of that, that's fine, but there are some things like that for technical corrections. There's also the leftover of the site special permit, uh, reducing the number of findings of facts. I think for this spring, some of the smaller bylaw changes would be coming from staff. Well, if the board's thinking of those as well, that's that's fine, but I was aware of that.
And I knew you were, yeah.
Prior discussion, so, um, but if you want to bring it to the fold, that's fine too. Sorry, Tim, go ahead.
No, Dave, I mean, and I know I apologize, I'm harping on this, but that that major occupancy thing has been stuck in my craw for a while. I I really want to get that cleaned up and if if that's, you know, whatever time David can pull from some other towns of how they do it and and get it cleaned up, I I just. There were a lot of loopholes in there that I didn't like once I really got into it and started reading. And I I think we really gotta get that cleaned up if we're gonna give the building and. And I think we really gotta get that cleaned up, if we're gonna give the building inspector any enforcement ability. That's my opinion. Like I said, that one's been sticking in the craw for a while, and I just, I'd like to get it cleaned up if we can. But again, it's up to the board, we can talk about it, come up with a list, and decide what we wanna do. But I think that should be part of our business meeting, is come up with a plan of what bylaws, zoning bylaws, to attack in the next couple of years.
So it sounds like we have a lot of business meetings.
Yeah, we're just gonna shut down the planning board and have business meetings till September.
I think just gonna take that.
But, Norm, I think we should, and again, you guys can tell us, Norm, I think we should plan for at least two in the next six months, cause it's been years since we've had one, and I think there's a lot of things, being zoning bylaws, discussion on open space, you know, even clarifying some of our A and R bylaw to include the illusory frontage, cause I know we've only put a letter out about that, but we never updated the zoning bylaw. So, you know, maybe we should do that. You know, so, that's why I think it'd be a good idea to sit down at a business meeting, maybe it's not a long one, and basically, you know, we've got some topics now, but form a plan.
Well, we can do that. One big problem that I still am seeing is this stupid COVID thing.
Yeah, I know.
Because, well, basically, there's no other place we can meet.
Of course. But not tonight.
Yeah, I was gonna say, head right out there, right now.
Yeah.
We'll adjourn the meeting to the outside.
I can rent you out the upstairs of the old fire station at a very good price, as treasurer.
And, you know, for example, I think one of the things we had thought of at some time or other was, you know, doing them on our off Tuesdays. Hong Kong meets our off Tuesdays, and this is the only place they can meet.
Yeah.
You know? So, I don't, I guess.
Is there a reason we can't meet in the Cleve Blair place over there, you know, the?
Conference room?
Yeah, the other conference, that's huge.
The library down there, the other.
The big one? Yeah, it would have to be the big one.
Yeah, that's what I meant, the big one, not the one. But the big one, I mean, cause during the COVID times, Mike Sullivan had.
Yeah, Mike Sullivan had both.
Just a comment on the conference room, so that is booked through carry. And just from experience, we do have to keep in mind the COVID vaccine clinics, cause that sometimes does make that room unavailable for use. That's come up a couple times.
Yeah.
The good news is, according to the fire chief, they're going to only Monday for, I don't know how long. Only Monday clinics.
Okay, good.
Uh, Dave.
Now, what happens, what happens the day on Martin Luther King Day, for example, an upcoming Monday holiday, I don't know.
Do you have any kind of anticipation on what or how heavy our agendas are gonna be for the next couple of months?
So, yeah, we have the car wash to be resolved. I'm expecting that they're gonna be able to address the issues that they have. So, if that goes according to plan, that should be closed out at the next meeting, unless there's some major deficiencies where they're not able to get it done. Then after that, there's gonna be a marijuana retail store coming up for hearings. Other than that, there's no new subdivision center in the wings. It's probably more of the routine A and Rs, existing subdivisions. So it's possible that the business meeting could be incorporated into the regular meetings, just as a matter of course. Just have it on the agenda as a running item, business meeting, the time allows.
Just wondering, if we could even, and I don't know, maybe we cannot do this, but, you know, set a time limit, our regular planning board meeting is from 6:30 to 8:30, or 8 o'clock. And we make sure that, unless it's impossible, you know, we fit the agenda items that will fit into that time, and then after 8 o'clock, we'll work from 8 to 9, or whatever you want.
I like that, Norm, that's a great idea.
Business meeting.
Because we put business, we put discussion points on our agenda for the last couple of years, and it's 9 o'clock at night, and all of us are like, we're dead. So, I like your ideas of literally scheduling the time.
It's an idea.
Oh, it's a great one, we should do that.
Try it, see what happens.
Okay.
And not only that, does Tamika have to be here during that discussion, the business, or not?
I don't really think so.
Then she can go home and be with her kids.
Well, you know, it's.
Unless she wants to be away.
Somebody's gotta take notes, cause it's an official planning board.
It's an official planning board meeting, well, I don't know, how do you feel about it?
I don't think for me it would be any different than just doing a regular planning board meeting, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would think that it is part of the planning board meeting, that the meeting is still open for the planning board, this is an agenda item, like any other agenda item, and it gives the time it needs. Maybe some nights it's gonna have to be short for how much time it is, depending on how long the rest of the meeting is before it. With a short meeting ahead of it, and it's a longer period for it, if it's on there as a running item, it is technically part of the planning board meeting.
Yeah.
It's not a separate meeting per se.
No, it isn't.
During one, and start another one, so.
But anyway, so I guess, the other thing is that, and I'm gonna kind of put the task on to Dave, to at least try his best to arrange things, you know, a lot of things you can't, you know, you've got deadlines when you have to do something. But trying to arrange things so that it appears anyway that we might have some time at each meeting. Yes?
Sure, that's fine.
We know it's not gonna work every time.
Yeah.
You know?
The other thing, Norm, I wanted to throw out there is, we're approaching the end of January, and I think all of us know that we've got a Maytown meeting coming up, February, March, April, 12 weeks. Should we be maybe sending a letter out to our subdivisions that we've got on our, you know, regular agenda? That if you plan to do any road acceptance, you got till second week of February to submit them. I guess I'm being harsh, but I'm tired of this coming in, and the end of March, we get four weeks to try to pull this off, and we're jumping through hoops. Or the third week of February, or the end of February. But I just think we need some time to be able to make sure Carl can get the review, we got all the ASBILs, we've got all the questions answered, and we can go to town meeting feeling confident of the roads that we're gonna stand behind with the town. I don't know, that's my thought.
No, you're right, because you don't know the situation Kyle's gonna be in with other towns, so.
Yeah, I just think giving them a heads up isn't a bad idea. It's sort of, it's my project management covering my rear end thought process.
I'm just trying to think of the two subdivisions. Did we get ASBILs on Maple Ave?
Right, so actually, all these are in the works right now as we speak.
Yeah.
This Maple Hill Estates is an ASBIL. Rice Lemon Phase Two, there's an ASBIL. These are currently in the hands of the consulting engineer, and he's reviewing those against the checklist, so. In this case, these are in the works, these are known, these were carryover from the fall when they were already. So it's not the situation where the board's gonna be caught flat-footed on these two, because these are already well in advance, these are well underway, so.
Okay, I just didn't know that, Dave, that was, and experience has told me, we've always gotten minimum amount of time with these subdivisions to try to do anything, so that's the only reason I brought it up.
Well, as we know, as we know, these were not put on the last town meeting because they were not ready. And that the ones that would be ready were Maple Hill Estates and Rice Lemon Phase Two.
Yeah.
So these are continuations of ones that are under development, where they have been working through the pick list, and now it's getting down to very few items, so.
It's gonna be more keeping on top of these punch list items. And particularly noting, hey, over the winter, what happened?
Yeah.
You know, there's anything gone wrong. So, those should not be, those shouldn't be, probably no problem.
Just to let you know, you know, one of the things I see coming in central Mass Regional Planning, they're already trying to do 2050, thinking ahead. And this goes for all boards and everything else in town here. You know, they're looking forward, what do we look for, what do we do? And I'm seeing an awful lot. We are a Commonwealth, we're not like, let's say, the ARK or county government is effective. I have that funny feeling that that's what's gonna be coming, is like county government. They're gonna try to regionalize various things in this, you know, you've heard maybe regionalizing dispatch, you have regional schools.
Regionalizing, I can see, we just got rid of county government.
You've got rid of county, but it's, they're trying to work, it just, it just seems like they're trying to work a few things in, little by little. So, just something for you, just in the back of your mind, and who knows, in 2050, you're gonna say, damn it. He was right. Or damn, that guy was stupid.
I hope you weren't for that, Dick, so you're on your own, buddy.
Oh, anyways, just to let you know, okay.
I'll make sure I get a hold of you in 2050.
Uh, just don't step on me too hard.
I'll probably be talking sideways to you. Okay, last item, Mary Paxton Road.
What's that about?
I say that it is, I'm not for it.
Why?
Because it does not meet town regulations.
Is that why it wasn't approved, or it was turned down by the, what, the building?
Board of Appeals, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So, under the statute, if there's a matter coming before the zoning board, the planning board is entitled to look at it, see if the planning board has any comments or no comments. That's why this is here, it's a zoning board matter. This was previously a matter before the ZBA for three items. They did not approve any of the items at that time. This has come back again for a build-up decision, and the zoning board has been advised that they need to hear this. So that's why it's on tomorrow night, and that's why it's here tonight.
What, Dave, what's the building inspector saying, the setbacks? Cause like, for some reason, it wasn't in my hard copy package, so I just, I'm looking at this now.
Well, the basis for the denial in this case is that it was previously denied because the lot is non-conforming, and that there are no vested rights attached to the prior structure, because the prior structure was demolished more than two years ago. So that the uncutted or building permit has a right for a single-family dwelling.
Okay.
So if the board chooses to comment one way or the other, it's on the agenda for tonight.
My comment was, I guess we need to follow our town regs for house lots. I mean, maybe we don't need to comment, I don't know.
You know, I think, that would be an obvious one, you know, even to them, so. I, like you say, I don't, that's my feeling, I don't feel, we don't have specific issues to the planning board itself.
Cause we don't have to worry about, it did say there's a site plan in there. Should we, it said exhibit C site plan, is there a site plan? That's the only thing, cause that usually falls under our jurisdiction.
I think you're actually, the site plan is not as you would take it for a commercial situation. Site plan, in this case, just means the location of the house on the lot. It's not a site plan review, that's a subject.
Just for, for the building inspector, see how things are laid out?
Yes.
Yeah, coming up right there, there it is.
All right.
So there's no, there's no county board jurisdiction on this.
It doesn't have frontage, obviously, cause I only see 101 feet.
That's right, the front is not conforming.
It means 150.
Correct.
The lot's too small, it doesn't conform to acre and a half.
Correct.
So it's just a lose-lose situation. Okay.
Like you said, the house was torn down two years ago, so it's not as if you're replacing, you know.
So we don't have particular concerns.
What, does anybody know, is it just, has this property been donated or something, or they buy it?
Don't know.
They bought it.
They bought it?
I think it was before us, once before, we mentioned that it's too bad they can't go to either side. I'm not too sure if the radiant side has got enough acreage there. And asked if they could buy more to make it legal property, but.
Yeah, Dave, if they bought 25 feet from each owner, that would probably expand it out, and maybe even given them the acreage too, for the, all the way to the back, so, yeah. I'm with Norm, I don't think we have any comments on this. The only thing that I had noticed, and again, I'm agreeing with you, I don't know if it's even our place or not, but in the verbiage, they said, it looks like they're, you know, stating that they have precedent set for other structures like this, but it looks to me, as I read through it, that it was all on existing buildings, and not building a new, a new building, you know, it says, "The use of land or structures for educational purposes, or land owned or leased by nonprofit or educational corporation." To me, that just sounds like it's existing, and if they had left the building there and wanted to turn it into a five-bedroom home, they might have been okay. But they tore the building down, and now they're building a new one, so, see how that falls in. I'm with you, Kevin, I agree. They really don't have a leg to stand on, because there's nothing there except land right now.
Well, that's what the media is there to decide.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, there was a revised agenda that had one more item on it.
Oh.
Just a quick master plan update.
Oh, okay.
Give you a couple of tricks on that. Thank you, so the master plan steering committee, this is the master plan update for Phase One and Phase Two. So the master plan steering committee has been meeting on a monthly basis. So we appreciate their engagement in this process, their assistance has been greatly appreciated. What they're currently working on are the goals and objectives for the Housing and Economic Development and Land Use chapters, there are three chapters for Phase One. After that work is done, then the information will be submitted to subject matter experts for each of those sections, Housing, Economic Development, and Land Use, to see if they have any comments or feedback on the goals and objectives that have been suggested up to that point. After that information's been collected, then there'll be a public forum. We recently found out that the Phase Two award has been made for a total of $36,730. A portion of that will be a match for the Regional Planning Commission, and also a match, which is town staff time. The next phase will consist of transportation and circulation and cultural and historic resources. After that, there'll only be one chapter left, which we'll be looking to get a Phase Three grant to finish up the whole master plan within like two years, and put it all together as the update. In a little while, we're gonna have a press release that will indicate to the public that Phase Two is under work. As part of what they're looking at here, the master plan steering committee, through the Regional Planning Commission's recommended one final survey that would focus on the remaining chapters. So once we have that information, we will then feed that back into the process and do more of the goals and objectives for the two chapters subject to Phase Two, and any remaining work for a Phase Three. After that, the project will be finalized, the survey will then be finalized and submitted to the public, so that folks can take the survey, then that'll be brought into the, into the rest of the project. So that's just a quick update on that. We continue to have to work in phases, but that's the way it is, so we'll work in phases until it's done. So that's it, thank you.
Should we look at this once in a while? It'd be interesting, I haven't got, I haven't got that kind of time, but boy, I think the planning board ought to be, you know, sort of interested in how they're looking at things.
I think when we get to the public forum stage, it's probably gonna be the appropriate time for that. I think when we get to the public forum stage, it's probably gonna be the appropriate time for that. Uh, the, the only thing I would just note, and I guess it's, I don't know, most particularly, from my last meeting, it just seemed as though we are, we are really starting to pull things together on that first phase. I've got some concerns, that I think I noted at the last meeting, that, uh, they were starting to propose some things that, uh, I I think were brought in from some much larger, more affluent towns, master plans that that didn't really fit that well, but I think they took that comment to heart as well, uh, in taking a look at it. But like you say, it seems as though it's, yeah, it's, I think they really kind of come together.
Well, just thinking that you're on, it'd be interesting to see how, how it is and how it fits.
There, there's not, I don't think there's really a good product to look at yet.
Exactly right, which is the reason for the occasional updates to the planning board. As we've done here, as we have more work and more of a work product is put together, the updates will be, you know, will continue to update. When we have a product to provide for the board's knowledge, we'll, we'll be, you know, be distributing that.
Dave and and Norm, this is Tim, just got a quick question. Have you been, um, I guess, requested or tasked for the upcoming budget season for either one of you? For planning board and or planner? Have you been tasked with that yet?
Uh, Dave has met with the TA regarding, uh, our budget for the upcoming year.
All right, good, I just, I, I forgot to ask the, uh, head FICOM lady if that is, that process has started yet.
He hasn't taken anything out of our budget, has he?
That's why I was getting that.
Right, so the stipends are in place after work.
Thousand dollars.
Last year, and the regional planning commission assessment is still there under the operating side of the budget, not under the planning board's, you know, account.
There's the new one.
Dave, we're actually, we're looking for this, okay. So it's up, okay, another two hundred bucks, it's, okay. That's good, I'll get this out tomorrow, thank you for that. And then the plan, our salary is consistent with the, the most recent table. It's finally been adjusted, so that's current, which is appreciated.
And to me, your pay rate is, as well? Just done her first, didn't they? Is there anything else to come before the board?
I want my thousand dollars.
What's that?
I want my thousand dollars.
Oh, thousand dollars. I heard a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, Kevin?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Anderson, aye. We are adjourned.